All right, let's do this. Paul to order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for April third, twenty twenty four. Welcome back aboard. Here we are. So let's kick it off with just introductions, do our little Zoom spiel. I've got a couple of things to just introduce and then we'll get into it. But I'm making, you know, so we've got, you know, what are the three of us, I believe this is our eighth year into this and we are three of the original members reviewing this application. And that consists of myself, William Hanley Chair, Tracy Loftus Keller, Vice Chair, and Meredith Randolph. So here we are, guys. And this was, this is the board that would be the voting board on this remand from from the court. And just for any of you out in Zoom land, I'm sure we all are well aware how the Zoom world operates now, but if you could, for the recording secretary's sake, who's joining us also on Zoom. Hi Heidi.
Hey Chair Hanley, how are you?
Fantastic. So all of you out there in Zoom, if you could, please in chat, sign in, just so we have a record, you know, online to additionally to the recording. Everything's being recorded in room two with the owl as well as online. And let's keep going. You know, the couple, couple of things about Zoom, you know, just no side discussions in chat, you know, you know, this is not technically a public hearing, James.
Correct.
So public comment is limited at best, if not none. And we have a very specific task before the board outlined in the remand from the court. And let me just first go through the introduction of why we're here tonight and then put, lay out a couple marching orders, bullet points for us to consider. And then I'm sure James' eyes will roll, but I would like to hear just a brief introduction from, you know, related parties to the case and let's get going. Yeah. And yes, thank you. So let's first find out if the butters were no, well, let me introduce why we're here. So all right. We are here tonight for item three on the agenda, item two, approval of minutes. There are no minutes to approve. So item three is the court remand judgment of January ninth, twenty twenty four for Harold McQueen Incorporated and Freshwater Stone and Brick, tax map OO seven lot seventy five. And were butters notified and public notice given?
Yes, butters were notified by letter dated March fourth, two thousand twenty four. And it was published on two dates on both in the north, the Mount Desert Islander and Ellsworth American, both March twenty first, two thousand twenty four and March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four publications.
Fantastic. Is there any conflict of interest on the board?
Hope it was on our file now.
Should know by now for sure. So just a couple of things to summarize just first for the record. You know, this is a remand from the business court and it's been going on for years and we're looking at a very specific task tonight. I'll get to that. But the planning board has jurisdiction this matter as it's the result of the court's direct remand. And I just want to explain why there's three of us here. It's just, oh, you know, this has been going on for technically, I think, ten years. And the three of us have been, I mean, I know I've been involved for eight years, Meredith, seven or eight years. I think you've been four, five years into it.
Yeah. And I've read all the documents.
You get a gold star for tackling the cart. And, and so, you know, the board decided where we are now, a full five member board with one alternate member, that it would just be unreasonable to have the other two members get up to speed this late game. You know, with the third court remand, ten years into this, and we had a forum with us three. We have been again engaged in the project for many moons and we will be the voting body of the board on this. So, you know, let's, let's keep going here. So, you know, what I want to first confirm that all of you guys have read the remand and generally understand why we're here and why it's back before us. And, you know, I wanted to, you know, you know, just outline for the board that, you know, based upon the language of the remand, you know, there's really one sole job before us tonight. And it's for the board, for the court, you know, they're asking for us to find additional findings of fact and conclusion law to support its conclusion on that the McQuin's right title or interest is inadequate relative to the QLOs requirement. So technically, from the language of the remand, we're, this is a findings of fact and conclusion of law exercise for us. You know, this isn't, you know, and, you know, I'm sure it'll come up too, you know, a broader deep dive into it. We've got a very specific task from business court before us. So I wanted to outline that first. And with that, any initial questions from you guys or feeling like you're ready to jump right back into the fire? Feeling good, Meredith?
That's a lot.
And, you know, who knows? I mean, let's keep an eye on the weather tonight too. You know, everybody's conscious of that. I think it's only really, you know, starting to snow around nine and we always cut the meeting off at nine. So, you know, we're conscious of the, of the clock. So with that, why don't why doesn't the applicant give us a brief introduction as well as, you can probably hear from Dan too, and get going on this?
Thank you. Good evening. Are you looking just for introductions of who's here?
Yeah, just introductions, you know, hellos.
Sure.
Come on up to the podium. If you'd like to, you are in the front row though, so it should pick you up well, but.
Okay, well, sit not to be the little guy.
All right.
My name's Patrick Lyons. I'm attorney of the law for Eaton Peabody. I practice at our Ellsworth office and I live in Ellsworth. I'm the new guy, as it was called. I've been asked by McQueen and Freshwater Stone to represent them moving forward in this matter. Here tonight, on behalf of Freshwater Stone is Andy Odean. We also have Paul Quinn at the back. And we also have Steve Salisbury and Chip Haskell, two engineers that are here that have provided their services for the applicants, McQueen and Freshwater Stone. I understand you're not looking for any argument or anything regarding that at this point?
Uh, right at this point, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It's nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. Dan?
Good evening, everybody. I've, I've been here probably the longest along with James through this whole thing. Daniel Polagia represents several of the butters, Jan Coats, Peter and Judy Aylund, and Jerry and Laurie Schenkeritz. Thanks.
All right. All right, James.
Speak, please.
Oh, yes. Where?
Hi, thank you. I'm in Zoom land.
Hi, hi Brian.
Thank you. Nice, nice to meet all of you. I'm, I'm Brian Rayback. I'm here on behalf of Hans Uch and Julia Hazard-Merk and the Neighborhood Group. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Pierce Atwood. I'm only slightly more tenured than Patrick on this. I did attend the, what I consider to be famous parking lot outdoor meeting during the pandemic.
Which one?
Were there more than one? Well, the one that I attended, we had decent weather, so that's quite, that was, that was quite a good experience. It's the only outdoor meeting I've ever done.
Did the coyotes start howling in the middle of it?
For one of the high school.
Yeah.
I was the only one with a park on in the close to that.
It was like a drive-in movie theater almost. All right, well, wel- welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other hands up anywhere, so let's get going. James, any opening comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I, 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 I want to say as you, you, all three of you read the remand. They turned down the business, the, the, the two factors that the decision was made on, they turned down the one on the purpose and did not turn down the decision. Now they're for and against, sort of said no comment to the one on the right title of interest. And instead, the court said that we need more findings of fact. Specifically, I, I read through this decision about ten times and I've narrowed it down to a couple of sentences. Page ten, they say, he says ultimately, the municipal agency is required to make some type of factual determination whether the rights granted in the easement are sufficient to carry out the proposed activity. I'm, I'm really impressed by that. That makes an impression on me. Goes on to say, Thomasino requires a map that demonstrate not just any right title or interest to the property, but a right title or interest in the property that allows the property to be used in the manner for which the permit is sought. So it's not any right type of interest, title or interest, but to use in the manner for which it is sought.
And can you just clarify what Thomasino is?
Thomasino is a case down in Southern Maine about an easement with some trees in it. And for some reason in that town, you had to get a permit to cut trees inside of an easement because it was so many feet from the lake and it was an extremely confusing case that half the lawyers may disagree with. And it used to be you never looked ever at the rights, the right of ways or anything like that. You just look the neighbors, spooked out when you went to court. And Thomasino seemed to say, well, maybe you gotta look at it a little bit. It was confusing to everybody. So then on, in, on page twelve, there's this paragraph, I don't read the whole thing, but I think this really focuses and I won't have to say too much more tonight. Specifically on remand, the planning board must determine whether the McQuin supplied record evidence demonstrating the easement's allowance enables the use of the property in a manner consistent for the use which the permit is sought. And I think that's it. So I think your job here tonight is to, to go through what you did before and the reasoning that you had. And if it was me, I'd just add a few record citations. I'd say we did it because, and we said this, and this is what we decided and quote to some sections. Fortunately, Mr. Pelagi has been kind enough to provide you with a few record citations. And you know, that's about it. Basically, the court's saying you can show your math. I don't know whether I like your answer or not, but you can show your math. That's all they're saying.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I highlighted was, I mean, just the added two on, on the conclusion on page thirteen and I'm just gonna read it aloud and that's the issue whether plaintiffs possess sufficient right title of interest and the access road to their quarry site is remanded to the board for findings of fact and adequate, for findings of fact adequate for ju- judicial review. And essentially, I again take that as they just, like James says, want us to show up math and explain, you know, just quantitatively a bit more about why we arrived at that.
And one of the reasons that's important is then when you go on, if it was appealed to the law court, the, the case law says in the E C, I forget where it is, but it's in here somewhere, is that the court says that the planning board's decision can be given deference. Now, that doesn't mean they're, it decides it, but it is given more deference if they show their reasoning and cite it to things in the record. And so that's all you're doing is matching your decision, fixing it up, getting a couple of references.
Yeah. So you guys all understand that those marching orders. You know, one, one of the things I, so we're talking about this, the right title and interest issue about the the road and the Muzetti interest in it. And, you know, the at that time when we were reviewing it, just the the third party interest in access over that road. And if you guys all recall, I'm sure you do, about our findings on that, that we considered they didn't have right title and interest because of the third party interest in, in control of the road.
It was the, just wasn't as the statement that they had to, they couldn't do anything without proof of from.
Yeah, right. It was a what's the legal term, James? A uninvolved third party or to the application. So and, you know, one of, one of the questions I had, and, you know, we, you know, we received this extensive thirty-two page package here from Mr. Lyons and Eaton Peabody and with a amended easement in it is, you know, looking back at what you know, we had done, James, on this is that we had previously in, yeah, March, and I'm looking at the the business court remands. In March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, McQueen obtained a new revised easement from the land, landowner in which, you know, that was really relative to the, the, the right of way of the easement area and where it was expanded to fifty feet. And I know that, you know, there's been considerable discussion about the admittance of a amended easement at this point in the game. And I just wanted to ask you, James, first about the, the, the admittance issue relative to the board's history of revise or amended submissions. What do you think?
Oh, no more submissions.
No more submissions.
There was submissions, submissions. We're not in the submissions world. We're in the remand world.
Right.
Submissions were two years ago. So at this point, the moment you start submitting anything, Brian over there is gonna wanna submit a bunch of stuff. He's got all kinds of thoughts and his experts have all kinds of thoughts. And I'm sure Dan and Patrick will dig something up too. So when you left the door for submissions, everybody gets more submissions.
So in the, you know, and again, you know, I'm sure I'm gonna be repeating this multiple times tonight, but, you know, again, looking at our tasks of the additional findings of fact and conclusions on our decision on the right title and interest. How do we handle though, where there's an amended easement addressing that?
My answer to that, and not to be cavalier, but is to say so, it wasn't part of the application. And the problem is you have to be fair to all concerned, right? And so to do otherwise would be to say you have a hundred and fifty things that are in an application. This application has like a hundred and fifty parts to it. And you make a decision and the board says, well, we don't like one thirty-nine and one twenty, deny it. And the applicant says, oh, I can fix those. And they fix those. Then you go through the whole ritual again. Mr. Pelagi will be very upset and he is, he'd be saying, well, I want to comment on that standard. You can't go on forever. You have an application, it's set, you look at it. I think the board has been extremely generous over time in letting in a few changes. And in particular, I recall the business about the D E P and the size of the application and they've reduced the size, they put in a new plan and so on. But now that the, the application's been reviewed, the decision is made, you're not making any new decisions. It's on remand, remand, you're supporting your decision. That's it.
We're supporting our original decision. And just to clarify, the court hasn't rendered a decision on the right title in interest matter because they just don't have enough math from us.
They don't have enough factual references, linkages. It just wants you to say, we decided for this reason and then cite to our reference. That's all they want you to do.
We're remanding the decision that we made back then based on the information that we had at that time. So anything new isn't relevant. It's not, it's not the basis of what the information was given to the courtroom and they, that information, we're not coming up with something new.
Right. We're turning back the clock here to our original decision and they just want more information, why we made that decision. It's, it's not anything more than that at this point. And and if it were to be, it would be beyond this remand. I mean, it's, you know, we've got really specific marching orders here from the business court. And so I wanted to just get that out on the table. And I don't know if it would be appropriate, James, for the board to have a finding on our understanding of the court's remand so we can just have the clarity there of what we're doing and that there's nothing more than that.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate because the court does seem to give you a little leeway to go off the rails here if you want to. Cause it says, it will be up to the planning board to determine the nature of any additional proceedings on the issue of the sufficiency on McQueen's right title or interest in the access road. The planning board may make new findings of fact that supports the conclusion. So I take that to mean that you make new findings of fact. Now, if you're wild and crazy, and I mean really crazy, you could look at that and go additional proceedings, we're gonna talk about it. And you're gonna bring in new evidence and go on for another five years. You wanna do that?
But we're remanding the decision that we made back then. So there's not any.
The decision is remanded to us. We're supporting the decision you previously made. Want to me? We're not remanding, the court remanded to us.
Okay. Regardless of the, of the.
So we just substantiate reasons for our last decision.
We're still, yeah, just clarifying the decision that we made back then. So I did the, like proceeding, we can't carry it forward. That isn't clarifying the decision we made back then. We need to stay back in time with where we were when we made the decision and, and clarify.
I agree.
We're gonna ask to do.
I agree.
Mr. Lyons.
James, could you read the last sentence of that paragraph you just said?
Well, I don't, I don't wanna hear too much, you know, the attorneys, but I'm sorry.
I do.
Oh, you do? Well, you're the chair.
Yeah. You read that again?
Yeah.
What page is that?
If the planning board changes its conclusion concerning McQueen's right title or interest, then it will need to address the remaining criteria for approval. So if you decide that you want to change your opinion about the right title of interest, then if the same is adequate, then you can go and address the remaining criteria for approval.
Any board changes its conclusion concerning McQueen's right title or interest, kind of will need to address remaining criteria for approval. You know, that, that seems contradictory to the summary of the the core remand issue.
It's not really, because if you, if you look at the earlier revision, it talks about Thomasino. And then it just talks about if you substantiate it. And I think what the court is saying is if you you know, ended having that discussion in substantiating it and why we decided this, if you suddenly had, you know, we decided that wrong, let's change our mind. But I don't think you wanna do that.
But it still would be based, because we, we made that verdict at the time that we ended the quarry, the whole, the whole thing. And it went to the other court. So it seems to me that it'd be one thing that they're leaving it open that we go through trying to clarify our decision and that we decide that we didn't, we can't explain it because we decided that we were at fault. That they're leaving that open. But the idea of, well, there's new evidence and things have changed and, well, then that doesn't make any sense at the end. End of the whole process. When it ended, it ended. And we made the decisions based on the information that we had at the time. It seems to me you can't just leave things dangling open to change forever.
So I'm fascinated by the, the court's starting page eleven is with the reasoning here. So saying the provision that requires order consent, which may not be in reasonably held, does not automatically mean amends the role would be impractical. The simple conclusion is in connection to meet the law question, finally, that the planning board explained its reasoning, which is what I think they're pointing to. Then he goes on to say, the mere potential of a dispute. And, but then he says, absent evidence-based bindings. And that's all I think he's looking for is evidence-based bindings. Therefore, the appropriate remedy is to remand it from the road to make such findings in this matter. So, yeah, it is a little inconsistent because he seems to be saying, I don't want you to do it. And then just do evidence-based findings. Okay. I gotta drink more water.
You gotta make it?
Yeah, I gotta grab my leg.
Need help with the stretch? Mr. Lyons?
I just would ask the attorney caller, read the, the full language of these paragraphs he's citing to, is conveniently skimming over language that cuts against what he's advising the board.
Could I just make a request that everyone speak at a level that the back of the room can hear?
Absolutely.
Difficult. And I'm not at the back.
Thank you. Everybody got that? All right. James?
Well, I can keep reading if you want me to read, but I don't think there's any need to real. You read it.
Revolve that. You know, one, one thing I was gonna read, you know, and everybody would bear with me and just you know, on page three and just a little history of, you know, where we were at that point in time and that was in twenty twenty one. And that was, you know, when we were, when we were reviewing the right, the right title and interest issue. But, and again, this is from the remand, page three, you know, they talked about that the planning board was concerned that McQueen's easement provided him with insufficient rights to construct and maintain the access road relative to the QLO. Quarry, well, this QLO. License ordinance, thank you, requires, under its performance standards for existing quarries, the QLO imposes a general requirement that the owner ensures the maintenance of all infrastructure structures and their sites, including the access road leading to it from the public way. And that, you know, that was from QLO section six to six point two A two. The QLO also requires applicants seeking to permit existing quarrying activities like McQueen to supply the planning board with evidence of title right or interest in the subject property. And, you know, this, this was an, another question I had to James too, is that, you know, there, there was actually a second revised easement to this. You know, the, the remand talks about in August of You know, the the remand talks about in August of twenty twenty one. And um that, that second version of the easement provided that, um, you know, this again, just reading here um that except for in an emergency, McQuinn shall not undertake any construction or maintenance on the easement area without prior consent of the grantor, such consent not to be unreasonably withheld. Um, and then ultimately, the planning board concluded that um not, notwithstanding the revision, McQuinn's easement um does not convey sufficient title right or interest to the access road. And according to us, the planning board, um, this constituted a serious deficiency in McQuinn's application. And um at that time, McQuinn was invited to submit a plan showing how it would satisfy the street design construction standards. That was all ringing a bell. You know, so yeah, and it's um, yeah, that's, that's another term. So and then in um December of twenty twenty one, um, McQuinn submitted the access road design plans and um including a statement by the owner of the surveying estate. And I would assume that surveying estate is Muzetti. Uh, indicating their consent to the proposed plan. Um, and we, at that time, we did, we declined to consider the McQuinn's design plan, including the statement of consent. Because uh it it was just an untimely submission. So I'm just, again, and just kind of laboriously trying to paint the picture of where we arrived there, you know? And then um, you know, moving on to January of twenty twenty two, the planning board um you know, proposed three motions for a vote and which was approved for presentment to the planning board for decision. Yeah, and it just goes on to talk about the subdivisions fifty foot right away and what um and then ultimately, we had the um, the decision and in February of twenty twenty two uh with our um approval of our two motions uh denying the application on um on the purpose. Um, and then they're on the right title and interest. And again, the purpose was shot down by the court because it's not an actionable part of the Q L O or any ordinance. So.
Would you please speak up?
Yeah, so the you the the two motions that were approved is that we um again, denied the, the application on first the um the purpose statement of the Q L O. And then the second was on the right title and interest issue. And uh the court remand shot down our position on the um purpose statement um because it's not an actionable review standard of an ordinance. And then they asked for us to clarify our decision on the item two, the right title and interest. And, you know, it James, could you, could you maybe paint for us what quantifying findings of fact and conclusion of law two years later on um on the, on the second remand?
So yeah, I think it's, it's actually not that difficult. So you go through your, what I would do is I would look at the, the original motion, not the one that could overturn, but the one, the other one. And then I would just go through the points of the reasoning of that. I think it was Meredith, I think it was Uvated. Not if I remember correctly.
Wow, James, I don't know.
But go through the reasoning of it and just talk about it some more and then say you know, we thought such and such and why did we think that? Not creating anything new, but just trying to refresh your recollection about why you did it. And then say, well, we talked about this and we talked about that. And then see if you can find some sections of the record to help you with that. And do some citing to that. Mister Pellegi, as I mentioned, has fortunately in his memo to the board, helped you with a few citations. So that's all I would do. I think that's, that's enough. Anytime you do something which you're supposed to do, doing findings back conclusions of laws, you're supposed to say we may hereby, usually you're looking at the conclusion you're trying to reach, but you say, we hereby make a finding that. We make a finding that, we make a finding that, and therefore concluding from that, we, we conclude that. So here, your conclusion was, you made a finding that there was going to be um uh a road on the, in the easement area per the easement that was given. And that it was uh insufficient. And why was it insufficient? And I think that at the time, if you remember, it was insufficient because it was conditional. And your vice from counsel, who was very upset that it was conditional and not like most easements. And they felt that was, it was impractical. If I recall, I don't wanna put words in in Meredith Malt or Tracy Malt or or whoever was mouthing those words. I didn't, but that was impractical for the code enforcement officer to be chasing the applicant around. And then the applicant was supposed to chase Mister Muzetti. And that there was a problem with Mister Muzetti having taken and Mister Bear, the applicant's former attorney having taken quite a long time to get the easement in the first place. And then then having, when he finally did get the easement, the easement was conditional. That this was impractical to expect the applicant to be able to fix the road in a timely fashion, which is what's called for. And that the applicant would be um watched very carefully by the many neighbors who have expressed great concern over the last ten, twelve years. And that they would be calling, this is their right to code enforcement officer. And this would provide an untenable situation where the neighbors were upset. Once again, and then there was concern as well, if I remember correctly um about the increasing likelihood of storms. And that over time, we see because of climate change, more and more storms and more flooding events, a hundred year storms have become you know, every five years or so nowadays.
Every other year.
And there was some evidence about.
It was three times this year already.
So there was flooding and we just had a big thing this winter. And there was uh talk about uh evidence from, I think it was uh one of the engineers for uh Matt Mannahan, one of the engineers who brought along. He talked about the increasing of storms. I think you could um accept that as a, as a fact based on his testimony. And then you could say, because of that, we're, we're concerned, we are very concerned about potential flooding and storm events and the road being hurt or washed out. I think you could find that the trucks that there was evidence, which Mister Pellegi has cited too, and the applicant, I think, we we talked about themselves, they're gonna be big, heavy trucks transporting granite. I mean, it's granite and beating up the road. So that that was likely to cause damage. And Mister Pellegi has some sites for that too. And that you found, you, you could find that we find as a board that granite is heavy. It takes big trucks to transport it. There's increasing numbers of storms and there's gonna be storms that the trucks are gonna beat up the road. We find based on the record that the neighbors are concerned and they're sort of gonna be evidently calling in with complaints as soon as anything happens.
I, I feel it, I, I guess you're the lawyer, but it seems to me that we're going back to clarifying the decision that we made back then. It should be based on the way that we were thinking back then. And you're sort of elaborating a whole idea and everything, but you know, it's pretty simple. You can come up with all sorts of scenarios as to why we feel like they should have right, you know, that they, they need the full, the ability to ensure the maintenance of the road and all. You know, it's just extrapolating to come up with all the scenarios and the reasons why. But that's right there in the wording of it all. As opposed to what the easement gives them. And I feel, I don't know that it's necessary or to, to think of all, all the reasons that they, that they might need that and the things that are working against them. And I guess I feel like it should stay within our thinking as opposed to trying to create new thinking about.
I'm not trying to create new thinking, I'm trying to remember the thinking that the board had at the time.
We were not talking about the three storms that we had this one.
Mister um, I forget his name, the guy who was the engineer for that Mister Mannahan brought along.
It, sorry, Kim's got her.
Will it copy of your minutes from January nine and February nine and your decision? Be helpful.
Fantastic, Kim.
That will be helpful.
I might refresh it memories. I only have one copy, but you can challenge. Sure.
So I'm not trying to create scenarios. All I'm doing is, it says in the thing is, explaining its reasoning.
Right. But I think on the same reasoning that we just discussed, that we're not discussing new evidence or submissions, we should be going back to what we were thinking at that time, we're discussing at that time and not elaborating to new ideas.
Based on, based on the easement that we had in front of us at that time. You know, the, you know, Muzetti could, could essentially deny a request for maintenance, at least in some circum- circumstances. And then, um, you know, I think that was that was part of um our finding in that the applicant wouldn't meet the obligation to maintain the road in all circumstances. I mean, that there was.
Hands are tied.
Yeah, and then based on that language at that time, um.
It's the, it's the word of ensuring they're responsible for ensuring the maintenance of the infrastructure. And they're, they're not able to ensure that when somebody else holds the ultimate, the ability to say no.
Yeah, I mean, I um, I'm looking at Dan's submission of twenty twenty four. And, you know, item fourteen essentially says that. I mean, it says, because of the plain terms of the Muzetti easement at that time, the co-app applicants lacked um A, the unequivocal right to repair and maintain the right of way and therefore an ability to ensure um in quotations, maintenance of the access road and B, a property right sufficient to take all actions required to satisfy applicable ordinances. And again, that is the language of the easement at that time.
And I guess I'm just worried that, I, I don't wanna get I don't uh want to open, I guess, the courts up to discussing the scenarios into which, you know, they need to make maintenance and, and Muzetti denies them, doesn't give them. It doesn't, doesn't matter. What matters is that they're responsible to ensure the infrastructure and Muzetti has the right for final consent, which means the ability to ensure the infrastructure. They, they cannot because they don't, they are not allowed to do anything without consent from Muzetti. And like doesn't, doesn't matter what's going on, doesn't matter who's, you know, if everybody's nice. Because if you start playing out specific scenarios, I feel like people then can say, well, that couldn't happen because then, then he did this or whatever. But it's just the simple, direct wording of they're responsible to ensure. Can they ensure it? No, because Muzetti has the ultimate consent, has to do enough consent. A third party has to give them consent, so they cannot ensure. It's just keep it as simple as that.
James, I have a procedural question. So when, when, when planning boards are tasked with a very specific remand like this and we go and do that and remand it and it's based on um the, the, the review criteria and submissions at that point in time. If there was a modification to any of that, can that be brought before the court by the applicant during the processing of the the remand, if you follow me? So, you know, we've got, we've got this revised easement now. You know, and, you know, and I think we're, we're all in agreement. And I think we should have a finding on it that you know, that, that revised easement now is, is not um what we're reviewing. We're reviewing the original easement, um, clarifying our position on that. But whatever our, our clarification on the, on the remand is, can, can the applicant say, hey, wait, well, you know, sure, the board, you know, provided this additional findings on um the task you set before them in the remand, but hey, wait a second, here's this new.
Good luck. They can go off and do that. And I don't know whether, what, where, I don't know what'll happen.
But, but what's, what is the going through the course, it's a decision about whether our the course are, is whether we made a valid decision. That's what gets fed back to us. So it's not, no, nothing new is relevant. It's about the decision at the time that we made it, was it relevant? And so that's why we stay, everything stays. And I'll see how the courts could go and say, well, there's new evidence. And so, yeah, you guys decided correctly at the time, but we decided that we're gonna make a different decision because there's new evidence. That doesn't.
We're not setting ourselves off for a remand, remand.
I don't think so. I'm impressed with, and I, I, I wanna say to Meredith that I, I was not trying to introduce new reasoning. I was trying to reach, remember what the reasoning was. And I think Tracy's now looking at the minutes, but I'm impressed by the board's business here. At the word says, the board did not address whether the clause was embedded in the case, the mere potential of a dispute. Talks about the mere potential of a dispute. So that's the allegation. There's no disputes, it's just a potential of dispute. They can't get Mr. Setty to agree. And then they say absent evidence-based funding. I think that's the thing that he's, they're, he's looking for. Is, yeah, you made a finding that they didn't have adequate right title and interest. And all he's saying to you is, why did you make that finding? Tell me why'd you made that finding? Explain why you thought that was the case. You've been very eloquent in doing it, but I think when I think of my findings back at this was a lot, the conclusion and the findings have to be tied to specific things. Reasons from the evidence in the record. That's all I'm encouraging you to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm not um understanding. You know, the wording that I'm referencing ensuring maintenance and that Muzetti has ultimately requires consent. So there is a third party withholding their ability to ensure regardless of what the scenarios are. But that wording's right there. So why did the courts? Did, did we just delay? Is it possible that the courts just said, you told us A and you told us B, but you didn't tell us that that equals C?
Yeah, that's part of it. Um, I, now that you're here though, I'd like you to, to at least look at the minutes and to squeeze out as much as you can because the more you can say to, to flesh out the reasoning that got you to the endpoint, the more the court can understand it and then give deference to it. The goal here is to fully explain everything you got to that point. The, the reasoning to get to that point based on the evidence in front of you. That's the key. If the evidence in front of you led you to the conclusion, see how the two are tied together? You looked at the facts, you analyzed them, and based on the following facts, the things that you found to be facts, then you made the conclusion. That's why you made the conclusion was the facts. And that tying the two together is what the court's looking for. I like your analysis based on the strict deal of, it says this and it says that, but I think there was more than that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think we did get. Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think we did get into. Scenarios and the flooding and, and so forth, but I guess.
You just didn't spell it out in our conclusion or.
But I guess I, I, in my. Experience of uh. Disagreements with people going into the, well, what I'm, what I'm worried about is the flood, then they just need to. You know, you're, you're worried about an overall thing, and then when you provide specific, well, what happens if it floods? And then they turn around and they just give you a specific scenario that. Addresses that you shouldn't worry about that because of this, we're so worried, but they, you gave them one specific scenario. And truly what really happens is something you never even thought of. So, so it seems to me that it's the assuring the maintenance of. What we required was so they'd be able to ensure the maintenance of the infrastructure. And they gave us an easement that says Muzetti has the right to deny that.
So in. So here's, I'm just reading from our um statement of findings and conclusions from the ninth. You know, like, so to. Put it in context, I mean, our, our findings for the record. You know, the first finding, you know, we were talking about that the neighbors are represented by um Attorney Pleggy and. Attorney Katz at that time, and that they might be affected by the quarreling use or its remediation, and our second finding. Was about that, the site for which the quarry was proposed had no direct access to a street or road, the right of way was needed. The co-applicants had a right of way to the site described in the easement deed. Third finding was based on the testimony of several, several neighbors on numerous occasions, numerous. On numerous occasions, the portion of Hall Quarry where the site is located is quiet rural residential area. And our fourth finding was based on testimony of several, several neighbors on numerous occasions. That the previous use of the site for quarreling had adverse effect on their health, I mean, what, we didn't get into anything. Really specific in those findings relative to the word, to the right title of interest, so there's. There's a little bit of context for structuring our, our findings now, and then the, our. Um, conclusion, um, just reading the second relative sentence of the, of the. Conclusion was that the um. Quarreling License Ordinance, Section six point two eight two um. Requires that the owner and operator ensure the maintenance of all infrastructure structures and their sites and the easement. And it gives the book and page reference, provided by the applicant specifies that changes in construction or maintenance must be. Approved by the fee landowner. As it is impractical, impractical. To obtain the fee landowner's approval to repair and maintain the road from time to time ongoing. The applicant has not shown sufficient evidence of title, right and interest, so it. I mean, we just, we weren't specific enough and the, in our findings and conclusions and. I think that um. Again, just our task is to structure more specific findings and. Um, potentially amend the conclusion language.
I, I don't know about that, I kind of thought your conclusions were good, you could amend it, of course, but I, I kind of liked it. But when you're doing, I want to say two things, when you're doing those things that you read, I think those are fine. I think you, you might be helpful to add such as. Based on testimony from numerous parties, and then you say, for example. At the meeting on February twelfth of two thousand eight, so and so said, I mean, very specific uh or findings or. More directed.
So we would, we either amend a pre-existing finding or we add additional citations. Citations is the term.
And as the Meredith's point, I want to be very specific, but because it's a good point, which is. I'm not worried about an, an, an analysis after the fact by someone that's saying, oh, that specific example is wrong and I can prove it. It's an example, it's not definitive, it's just an example of the type of thing that you were, that's the reasoning. And you said, well, that could happen, and it's likely that these things are gonna happen. Though, as I, as I recall, you get the minutes in front of you there, though, there was a lot of discussion about. We can't have a road that's gonna be under heavy use. And then they had the, the code enforcement officer constantly being called out to argue with the applicant about fixing the thing.
Well, it seems that's in, in our decision has more. Not the specific scenario where it could be needed, but the elevated reasoning why this is a critical point. Of that, the heavy usage and, and the.
It's difficult enough when the person goes, and this is the, don't put, don't let me put words in a mouth, but I think if I recall the discussion. It's difficult enough when the code enforcement officer has to deal with a new thing and new use in this town. This being permanent for the first time, they're under the quarry like it's doing, but that's difficult, it's a new thing. And there's this ongoing relationship between the, the owner and the, their lessy and the code enforcement officer, keeping it. Good and lawful and an oversight. That's difficult, but then the road thing. The, the applicant can't even. Tell the code enforcement officer, yeah, we'll do that, because the applicant has to go ask Mr. Muzetti. And that's what I think the board found was impractical. I mean, I couldn't agree with the board, the example I would give you was like. They want to build a house and he only can, he has the, the land to build half those, the other half has to go to somebody else's property. And he has to go to them for the other permission, well, here they can't fix the road. Again, if Mr. Muzetti agrees to what they're doing. Otherwise, they can't fix it.
Mike, you said he could turn around and say, yeah, you have potholes, but they're fine.
He could say, I like those potholes, that particular one, I like, he could say, I'm in Tahiti, I can't be bothered with that right now. He could say, I'll let you do this, but not this, and, and then what, what are you supposed to do? Uh, uh, the freshwater showing people are going to, and, and Mr. McQuinn are gonna talk to the code enforcement officer, negotiate out something. And then they're, they're all subject to Mr. Muzetti's approval, that they can, you know, put a little bit more gravel in here, not there. And, you know. And I, I, I want to say that if I remember correctly what I said at the time, I was frustrated because I've seen hundreds of easements. And I wanted to see an easement, we gave Mister. Uh, Bear a long time to get an easement from Mr. Muzetti, it was a long time after we found out about this because. Kim was approached by the uh former head selectman or one of the selectmen. Well, somebody else building on the road, it came to everybody's attention, as you recall, the meeting at the high school, that they have, they had to be expanded and the road had to be upgraded. And I had discussions with Mr. Bear, this is all in the record, I had discussions with Mr. Bear at the time and said. Hey, man, you're gonna have to get an easement, it's gonna have to be a wider one, and he said, all right, well, I'll go after Muzetti, we'll get an easement. And what I was expecting from Mr. Muzetti, and I told you this at the last meeting, was the typical easement. As the right title, you know, an easement for all purposes of a way, free interest and interest, including detailed user law. I write them all the time, I'm expecting your basic easement. And instead, what I got was. Except for if Muzetti doesn't approve. It was outrageous. And specifically to the point. It wasn't sufficient right title and interest, it wasn't, they could do what. They're supposed to be doing, which is quarrying stone and keeping the road up. And it just didn't allow that. And then where I was going with that, but that's what bothered me about the easement.
And I believe that was part of the path and that we should probably include that in. The clarification that, that they didn't have an easement initially, gave them opportunity to have them. Create an easement, and this is what, after being given sufficient amount of time to come up with an easement. That we told them what they needed, but this limitation was what.
Still existed.
Still existed. Uh, and that they were given adequate amount of time to. And they didn't, they weren't able to get.
It says, it says. Whether McQuin supplied record evidence demonstrating that the easement allowance enables use of the property. In a manner consistent with that use for which the permit is sought. And I'm pretty sure we talked, the, the board talked about that. The use for which it is sought, which is a road that you can drive over, that you're gonna beat up, but you're gonna have to. And it was, and, and their right title and interest was inconsistent with that use. Because they couldn't fix it, practically speaking, and worked with the code enforcement officer to fix it when she wanted something fixed. Well, based on the conditions, because they had to run off to Mr. Muzetti. And therefore, they didn't demonstrate, that is, the applicant didn't demonstrate that they had adequate title and interest. That's how I remembered. Does that sound?
Now, part of our part, but the end of words.
So we have the. The limitation issue, the maintenance issue.
And the demonstrated delay of an occasion with Mr. Muzetti.
That weighed on my mind, I don't know, but weighed on yours, that weighed on my mind particularly heavy. And it took it so long to get an easement out of them, and then when we got one, it was conditional.
The, the timeliness of. Review and repair. What, what's that term, the fee landowner or?
Yeah, fee landowner is a shortcut for piece of life, so it's a person who owns the property in most cases. And the other terms that you'll see is subservient tenement and dominant tenement. The dominant tenement is the person who has the right to do something over, usually the easement holder. The subservient tenement is the person over whose land it's going, but that's just the fee owner. Mr. Chairman, if, if, if it's not too wild and crazy, uh, and if your board members agree, I think Mr. Pleggy has provided you with a roadmap. That I thought was not. I don't want to tell you what to do.
Yes, I think Mr. Pleggy said. I, I wanted to go through the findings, our original findings and conclusions, so. You know, we were all painting the same picture, what we're aiming at here in terms of where. Um, additional language would be keyed into. And then, um, I think James does have a good point, that Mr. Pleggy's document is um. Gives, gives us. Some guidance on um. What some of these, these issues we just talked about, the limitation and the. You know, um, specific maintenance and use and the timeliness of review and repair. Um, could. Be quantified as into a finding.
You could do the first part by reading, doing what you're suppressed and going through again and looking at the things. Then if we wanted to, you could go through Dan's things and you don't have to accept all of them, you could just discuss each one and see if you're gonna adopt that and move on to the next one.
Adopt Dan's findings.
Yeah, only after you do your other discussion, you're talking about.
Well, we just did it.
Uh, can you do it in a way that, uh, your recording secretary can?
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe we.
You want to write something off and come back and look at it, or?
I mean, maybe we, we break it down into. I mean, those were three issues I just, you know, hold on, I mean, the, the first one was the limitation issue. The Muzetti. Review and the easement and how do we quantify that more specifically to the. Easement language that we were reviewing at that time. And, and then I think from there, you know, Dan gives us some guidance on that.
We're in the structure of. The findings.
Yeah, so we're, we're in the structure of either. James, again, the term amending or. Conditioning or.
Clarifying your previous reason and adding some citations.
So that would be, you know, specifically in this case, this would be the um. Finding number two. The second finding that the, um, again, what that was saying is that they had no direct access to a public street or road. And right of way is needed, and they have a right of way to the site that is described in an easement deed recorded. At the registry of deeds and.
So those are all finding the fact, you, you just went through about four or five real fast.
Yeah, but those, I'm saying that like if we were to amend language in the original. Findings, it seems like they would be um. The limitation issue with Muzetti would be keyed into finding number two.
Yeah.
Unless we had like a whole new finding number five or something, I mean. Because the other findings are talking about the character, the neighborhood, the um.
What are you reading from?
I'm reading from our um statement of findings and conclusions from February ninth, Tony Tony two.
I, I looked, I looked at the footnote, I've been looking at the footnote on page eleven in, in the decision, it says. Uh. The intervenors presented numerous hypothetical scenarios in which it would be not, would not be unreasonable for the owner of the surveying estate. To a total consent that includes construction of these activities on the road. And this is a citation, however, there's no record evidence. That the planning board considered those scenarios or other facts when they determined that McQuinn did not demonstrate. Adequate right title and interest, and it's that nature of doing that, it's exactly what you're doing there, you go back to the things that you're doing. And just discuss each one a little bit more and add some more facts and some points of footnotes to where you decided this. I'll give you a very quick example, if you, for example, found that the fact was it had no direct access to the road. As we saw on the plan, there has to be an easement and it doesn't actually attach to the road. But, and then you move to the next one, and when you go through enough of them, you've built up. Then you add in some Meredith's reasoning that you talked about earlier, and I think that's it, you're done.
I mean, you know, so. Looking for some structure on that point, you know, Dan talks about in item number five. Um. Again, in his. March eighteen twenty twenty four document that um. You know, because the site of the, which co-app applicants proposed to Corey has no direct access to a public street or road, the right of way is needed from the site to their. Public street or road, and then um. There we have reference to an easement over a parcel of land owned by Muzetti is necessary. To access the quarry property. You know, and then.
Which is otherwise.
Yeah, so that kind of, again, that. There's, that kind of paints the picture of the necessity of the easement, right, which we. You know, it's just a top-down. Big picture position and then um. And then he goes on to talk about that um. That they did obtain right of way, and it's recording the registry of the Muzetti's um, Muzetti's meant. And then that quotes the Muzetti. And easement, I think. And easement, I think that's, except, you know, which states as follows, except for emergency note. For an emergency, no construction, repair, service or maintenance work pursuant to this easement shall take place without the prior written consent of the grantor, such consent cannot be unreasonably withheld. And then it gives the deed reference. You know, and then it, when I, and then it further clarifies that within that specific Musetti easement is that the owner of lot seventy-eight, Mr. Musetti, has a discretion to deny co-applicants ability to maintain service and repair or improve the access. And again, we've got a book and page number reference. And then it, it gives also examples of what could potentially initiate road maintenance, I mean. Big trucks, big rocks.
Storms.
Storms. And then it, and then it gives maybe a more hypothetical situation about damaging adjacent landscape and what plowing and things like that. And then also talks about, yeah, storms, so. Now, we've got. In our findings, we I think need to clarify the easement reference more specifically. What that easement is specifically and the concern for potentially limiting maintenance of it. Is one, one thing. And then just trying to mold the clay here.
I think you're on the right track.
And again, relative to the easement language at that time.
It seems to me that a scenario would be that there's some sort of repetitive damage every time it rains heavily. You get a blowout on the road and that the applicant decides that they need to really put in a culvert in a certain location so that it doesn't blow out in every location and Musetti doesn't for any reason, he doesn't wanna have to level of repair done. So that every time it rains, it'll, you know, it would be reasonable for him to allow the repair to happen after every rain, but an actual change of the infrastructure so that the maintenance isn't so tedious. It would be blocked.
Existence of the easement, the easement specifics and a scenario that would would complicate access.
Means the road will blow out every time it rains and Musetti says you can repair it, you can repair it every time it rains.
Maybe we aim at a motion for the first further clarification of finding number two. In our original decision of the ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I like that methodology where you're just going through each one and saying, what were we thinking of there?
Well, the other three findings aren't relative to the right, right title and interest issue. It's, it's really only finding number two.
Uh, well, this, the, the one being the lack of adequate title, right, and interest.
She's coming back, she'll make some comments.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have like a three-tier motion. That is, you know, clarification of a pre-existing finding. And, and again, it's like Yeah, so we're gonna have like a three-tier, I would suspect like a three-tier finding clarification for finding number two. Which is the relative finding to the right title of interest issue where we clarified the the why, why there's an easement, what the easement is and an example of a complication of the easement language at that time.
Do you have this?
The cliff notes, they're landlocked and they need an easement because they don't have direct access to a public way. The, and then the the easement says this and that. And it's still quoted in this book and page number. And because of the language of that, then there's concern about more storms, there's concern about the timeliness of review and repair, there's a concern about.
So Bill, just back to what you said, the first finding you don't think is what we're discussing?
I, I don't think so, I mean, we're.
Because?
So the first finding is just really specifying that that they have standing.
Um, but don't we need to, do we need to clarify why they may be affected by the quarries?
No, because that, that was kind of relative to the the other decision we made about the QLO purpose, which the remand said isn't valid.
Oh, okay.
Right, as is as is really the third finding as well as the fourth finding. I feel, really feel like what we're aiming at here is the second finding. Relative to the right title and interest issue. And I don't think that we are necessarily, again, changing the language of that or we are adding further clarification to it. I'm not heading off into the ether.
No, I think it's great, I mean, the second finding is about that and I, I think it was that point that you talked to Mr. Plegge's deal. And I think once you go through all the stuff that he mentions and he has the specific records citations for you and any other ones you wanna add. Then you can go back and there and certainly your reasoning and connecting the dots. You know, in the, in the motion which is on page three, it says the applicant is due to ensure the maintenance following structure structured in their sites. But the applicant cannot fulfill this duty because of limitations, so the report mentioned easement. Now, Meredith, earlier on, very eloquently said, they can't fulfill it because of this and this and this. I think that's what the court is looking for.
I mean, so the, you know, like thinking about, so, you know, so we've got these two first sentences, two sentences and the second finding and then maybe a third sentence talks like about, refers to maybe item five on Mr. Plegge's memorandum, you know, about that. You know, they, they have an easement because they don't have any direct access to a public street or road. You know, and, you know, we shot the lot reference. You know, and the and according, according license app reference there. And then item six, you know, maybe that that taught, that talks more specifically about, okay, what, what is what's what's the language of that easement relative to or the concerning language relative to the right title and interest, you know, we've got a booking page number on that. And then we then maybe have tried to materialize that into specific situations.
Um, I guess I, I, I just I, I think that the first finding, well, these are the findings that we have. Uh, the first finding, I, I don't remember the image of how this all works, but if the road isn't maintained people start driving off the road, you know, the, uh, maintaining road causes people to find new pathways and starts veering off to one side. The, the, it affects the neighbors, it seems to me.
You can make that.
Is something that we should.
Unmaintained potholes that are banging rocks around or.
Yeah, I guess at the time we may have been more focused on the other issue, but these are the findings we found relevant to this issue. And I think we should elaborate as many of them rather than just saying it's only the second one because then the other ones.
What, I think you can do that, Meredith, but you maybe just have specific additional sub-points of finding number two, two A, B.
Yeah, we can focus on two, but I, I just had the impression that you were like, well, never mind with the other ones. And I'm like, oh, no, I, I think we, we, we found them, we have to uphold them.
They're leaving there, they don't hurt anything.
Right. But I think we can even say things to substantiate. I do agree that two was the votes.
Maybe we aim at like a draft motion.
That I read, Mr. Plankton's. Get your air drafts for, for, for bacon.
But before you do that, I just, I don't the idea of doing a motion, I'm not really turned off of that, I, I'd, I'd prefer, I think it might be easier, I should say, if you just went through one, agreed to it, through two, agreed to the language. And when, if you got ten points, then at the end, somebody could just propose a motion to adopt that, rather than have a big, long motion.
Okay.
Just adopt the following.
So the findings of that are.
They need an easement, right? And why do they need an easement? Because they're landlocked.
Because they have heavy equipment and need, I guess, the emphasize the need for the.
They need road access to a public way.
Substantial or, you know, stable, consistent access or something. Yes, it's given, but it elaborates.
I think if we'd said something like that, we would have to like key it in specifically to like a road standard or something like that. I think for the, again, for maybe the we gotta paint the context of our finding here and context of the issue with the right title and interest better. And so it's narrowing it down each one. So the first one, we could say that because of the subject property located at.
Do we have a, of a
Yeah, we did.
The, the map actually showing us where this easement is and everything. I don't, I don't remember the details of it.
The quarry is lot seventy-five. And the Musetti's lot is secondly.
That's the type of way that the judges like to see it. They want to, to, to have it nice and simple where they say you know, we, we found that the, the subject property was landlocked, it was at lots such and such, which is not connected to the crane road. So they can understand references made to the plans.
Paint the, paint the picture, the lay of the land here. With a
Okay, I was.
Written a script.
It's, it's lot, lot seventy-eight that we're talking about?
No, so Musetti's is lot, yes, Musetti's is lot seventy-eight.
Which includes crane.
Yes.
The quarry is seventy-five. Right, which they didn't actually put on here.
So, I mean, we could.
So this is all discussing the maintenance of, of the crane. Or is it just this section?
Just this section that's crossing lot seventy-eight.
Uh, this is indicating that the crane road crosses. There's overhead utility. It's just here. There's a park, no?
Would you like the applicant to?
We can look at the other. Is this? No, this is probably the, oh, the, the section of the roads. It'd be nice to have clarification, a refresher on where the, this right of way is crossed.
Would the applicant care to just show the lay of the land here on the plan?
Maybe Mr. Salisbury. He shows his desire for sure.
Looks like you're up, Steve.
The Hall Quarry Road out here, Town Road. Coming in along the blue. And the quarry property is this section. Uh, this is going along the Musetti property, crossing over the Moore's property for this little, little bit of a section here. And then entering all this road is already on the property, just providing room for the turnabout.
Where, where is the?
You've got the map right there.
Right.
Is everything here belong to Mizzetti?
Where, where is Mizzetti's talking line on this side?
No, from the road. All the way to here. This is all Mizzou property.
So the crane road is. Part of what we're talking.
Yes, it's on the Mizzou property.
Yeah.
Is that in your question?
Yes, great. I think we should clarify that the maintenance of the pro app. Is the access for, for everybody who's in the frame.
Uh huh.
I don't see that at any place in. What we've discussed so far, the impact on the neighbors because it's. The road.
Uh huh.
Just as much as the heavy equipment elevates the need for the access road, the fact that it's not just. It's not just the quarry that is using. This.
Yeah, did, I mean, it's um. Remember, we, it's serving more than three lots.
Speak up, please.
Yes, sorry. It's serving more than three lots, so.
It counts as a road.
Uh huh.
But it still has to be maintained, it's private road.
Yes, but again, relative to the right title and the interest issue, the, the right of. Review by Mizzetti is only relative to that section of it.
This section of it or to this section?
No, for the entirety of the road that crosses.
Yeah.
Lot seventy-eight.
If he didn't.
Within.
If they didn't get right to maintain this section of the road. It would only impact, well, then other than the other things, potholes and things like that. That it might wander off, but if they don't maintain this section of the road, other people can't use the road either.
Right, so they have to maintain the entirety of the road across lot seventy-eight. As.
And that's why.
Within the boundaries of the easement. Or, sorry, within the boundaries of the right of way.
But that includes, it isn't clarified to the courts that that includes road that is used by other people.
Is, is that relative, James? I mean, no.
Well, if, if they don't, if they, if Muzetti denies them. Um.
Yeah.
For some reason, like, let's say that the issue is that during every rainstorm. The road blows out and you live that he says, fine, just fix it after every rainstorm, just go it, it means that. Not only they have to wait till it's repaired, but all the neighbors have to wait for it to get repaired, that it affects everybody. So the ability to go out and repair it when it needs to be repaired and not have to go get. Approval from Mizzetti. Doesn't just impact them, it impacts the neighbors as well.
I, I, I don't think it matters whether it impacts the neighbors or not, who cares? It is a problem, it affects everybody else, but. The, the idea is that the applicant was supposed to ensure. The maintenance of all structures in their sites pursuant to section six point two A two. So I think that's relevant if it's in six point eight, six point two point eight point two. And I should stick to. You know, what they're supposed to be doing on the site. What they have to promise to do. How they can do it or can't do it and how that's affected. There's a rhythm to these things, it's very specific.
Uh huh, but even like you saying that you're, that helps to have little, the little scenarios building up to one thing. It also helps to discuss who. Who it's impacting and how it's impacting, you know?
But I think the way to get to finish this big puzzle that you're trying to eat is to eat little bits. And I think the way to do it is to say. Well, the first thing is they have to have uh, the right to do what they're supposed to do, which keep the road in good shape. First, that's in the ordinance. Then you say, we find that the, it is separate from the road, there's no direct access, we find that. And we reference the plan, that's number two, that's the second finding. The third finding is, and you patently go through. That there was an easement proposed and the easement was as referenced on. And you cite to the thing that Ed Bear gave us for that easement at the time. That's the third one, and if it said blah, 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 blah. That they're gonna do this. Now. To, to do what they're supposed to do, such as the maintenance, for the reasons Meredith's talking about, the road being blown out and going over it and so on. And then you can cite some reasons why that's likely to happen. That's finding number four or five. And then by the time you go through a bunch of them, then you can say, as Meredith so eloquently said earlier, hopefully not taken. And this is inadequate because, so you go, there's this, there's this, there's this, there's this, which leads us to the conclusion that. It's that rhythm that I want you to get into. And when after you do it, you'll go, I, we can adopt that.
Off down. They got a landlocked lot, lot seventy-five. Access road crosses lot seventy-eight. For which they need an easement.
From car, car's slot seventy-eight, we just.
What, and spell this out.
Yeah, yes, I have. We probably have that right here, okay. I, I guess I, I would just elaborate that the, the access to the quarry is not just is. Over my Mizzetti's road. Using crane road. But there isn't a reference. Um, what I'm seeing there to the fact that this includes like crane road, which is. A road to more than just core.
We can say that, that.
Sure. And that's, that's all that I was.
So. I mean, we could structure it instead of finding number five, we could say finding number two A. Given that the quarry. Property located on lot seventy-five. Is land, is a landlocked property.
Yeah.
They have to have a. Right of way and easement across. The Mizzou lot and lot seventy-eight. Which is the crane road, which also serves more than lot seventy. Eight and seventy-five.
That's what I think is important.
Okay, there's, there's. Let's call that um, finding two A. Two B. What's the easement? So I'm just kinda hypothetically going top down here, trying to structure additional.
Oh, what's, what's the next finding?
So what's the next point of clarification for find, for our original finding number two? So let's call it point B, two B. Two B, okay, what's, what's the easement? Well, the easement is referenced on. Book, book and page number, whatever, in the Hancock County Registry of Deeds. And the easement says this.
That was the one that he proposed at the top back in the day.
At that, again, this is relative to that easement at that time of review. That this decision was made on.
The easement is reported in the Hancock County Registry of Deeds at book O R. Uh, seven, one, four, six, page three, three, three. Um, it, it, it is a uh, right of way over lot seventy-eight. Uh, described in an easement deed dated July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The easement states. That except for an emergency, no construction, repair, service or maintenance work pursuant to this easement shall take place without the prior written consent of the grantor. Such consent not to be unreasonably withheld.
And we should probably clarify that the grantor is. Mister Mizzetti owner lot seventy-eight.
Uh, this is Heidi, if you want that in this motion, you need to say it again and slower.
Yes, ma'am. Loud.
From where?
That the easement recorded in the Hancock County Registry of Deeds at book O R seven, one, four, six. Page three, three, three. Um, is a right of way over lot seventy-eight. That is described in an easement deed dated July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And recorded in the Hancock County Registry of Deeds. Which states as follows. Except for an emergency, no construction, repair, service or maintenance.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
Can, can't you just give her that?
We, we can, but.
If you want me to read it back to you guys at any point tonight, I will not have that. I mean, yes, I can pull it from the document, but you usually want it read back to you.
Let her keep reading.
Okay, we have to start from except for emergency, no construction, repair.
Service or maintenance. Work pursuant to this easement. Shall take place without the prior written consent, written. Written consent.
Hold on, hold on. Okay.
Written consent of the grantor.
Okay.
Such consent not to be unreasonably withheld.
Okay.
And also we should add grantor being. You said.
Yes, Michael Muzell.
The grantor is Michael Muzell.
Owner of lot seventy-eight.
So.
So we got two A and two B.
In the discussion that James was talking about, about going back, we had said. That in this information order, in the clarification of our findings. We're rewriting our findings to be clarified.
We're, we're giving additional clarification, we're, we're not, right now, we're not rewording any of this, we're giving.
Support.
Support to it.
So these are, because of the, the discussion of. Um, we gave them plenty of, you know, notice that they needed to have an easement.
But we can. Maybe that's, maybe that's two C.
Figure out how that fits in. That is exactly, okay, is another.
Before you get to that discussion, you have to get to the basics, which are. It was landlocked, it needed an easement.
What's the?
It was presented. Then we figured there were gonna be heavy trucks with granite in them.
Well, you missed the stuff of what the easement says, which.
Oh, so easement says.
To be, which we just said, so. To see the third point is.
One at a time.
Uh huh.
You're like six down the road.
Yeah, it's my brain flow is a little different, it's just fun.
We didn't get our seven thirty breaks, so.
Go Tracy.
You got momentum here, Trace.
Um.
So this would be item two C.
I'm just gonna read straight from your paragraph. Heavy equipment, including trucks and trailers, will access the quarry on a regular basis.
Okay, hold on. Actually, can you read that one more time? Sorry, I'm going back and forth on screens here.
Heavy equipment, including trucks and trailers. Will access the quarry on a regular basis.
Hold on. Okay.
That's directly from the quarrying license application.
Okay.
Is there a date of that?
Uh huh. Um, the original application, uh, section seventeen, which was revised on September twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Can you give me those dates one more time? Sorry.
Yes, um. I believe the original application, it was section seventeen. And which had revision on uh, September twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Based on the playing board's experience with road maintenance.
Yep.
Such traffic will necessarily damage the access road over time.
Okay.
Thus requiring maintenance.
Add a little wording in there about it will cause damage to the access road, there's. Oops, potholes and things, but I wanted to include wordage of recognition that this is not just for them. Uh, that it's the, will cause damage to the access road. Used by.
Not only the.
Not only by the.
Right.
It's the impact is not.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and have her record it.
You say it now.
And left off with this may include it, is that limited to puddles?
Okay, I don't have that part, what was that, Tracy?
It's just showing me, uh, Meredith where I was in the paragraph.
Yeah.
All right, I, I ended it thus requiring maintenance.
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
I guess I, I just add at the requiring maintenance for the use of. All or something, it just the like inclusion of recognition that it's not just their access road.
So could you just say, crime means, um, keep the road up for the applicant and for the neighbors?
Yes.
Comment, keep the road up for the applicant and for the neighbors, Tracy has to say it, then how do you can?
Okay. Hmm, comma, for the applicant as well as for neighbors.
Keep the road up, keep the road maintained for it. Say that.
That was item two C. We have a two D.
Does she, how are you done? I, I don't know, I, I, there's, they're more words, but uh, I don't know where Heidi is in her writing.
I've caught up, um, do you wanna hear what I have?
Sure.
Okay, uh, so this is all of two C, heavy equipment, including trucks and trailers will access the quarry on a regular basis. For the quarrying licensing application, original application, section seventeen. Revised September twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen. Based on the planning board's experience with road maintenance, such traffic will necessarily damage. The access road over time, thus. the access road over time, thus requiring maintenance. To keep the road up, uh, thus requiring maintenance to keep the road up for the applicant as well as for the neighbors.
Right. I'll just keep reading. This may include, but is not limited to.
Okay, hold on. Yep.
Potholes and movement of the travel surface, traveled surface.
Hold on. Okay.
The traveled surface outside of the right-of-way. Comma. All of which will need to be repaired.
Hold on. Okay.
And there, there are two citations. Uh, so after the word, uh. Okay, so it says see meeting minutes at four. Which is, uh, got a date of October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Hold on a second. Okay, can you just repeat that? See meeting minutes?
Comma, at four, and then in parentheses, parentheses. October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, end parentheses.
Okay.
And then a semicolon, and meeting, meeting minutes at eleven.
Okay.
Uh, uh, paren, uh, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, close paren. Period.
Okay.
So I wonder here if you want to add some other things that were talked about previously. I remember. The, the damage of the road from the grader. Damage to our snowplow. Potential damages from the grader and the snowplow. That's where the storm events came in. These were examples that I think were discussed. Correct me, Mr. Chairman, if I'm wrong, but. I think you, we did, that the board discussed all these things. I remember you saying snowplow. Somebody else said, oh, grader. And so these, there were a number of things that were brought up. So is that in section two C or is that two D? No, I think that's just part of it, the type of damage. You know, potholes, the road, the road could move out of the easement, you know, roads move and, yeah. Because you, you end up grading, you're just plowing, it's moving out, and you got to put it back in, while we just, we just described two of those. Do you want to put in more or just leave it at that? From plow, do you want to add plowing or grading? Additional impact, adverse impact from plowing or grading.
Okay, that seems to me that, that in my experience of dirt roads, the biggest damage that happens is heavy rainfall. Just simply it way being wet, people driving, and then it just.
In heavy.
Storm.
Yeah. Heavy rainfall. Slash storm damage.
So, yeah, where is that from again?
Number nine.
Oh.
You can do that one.
So. Are we on to a different?
So I.
We're, we're elaborating on the one that Tracy just did.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you have, wanted to add some additional. Impact, I mean, I will keep it within two C and then let's get to two D about the. You know, I would think. Well, we'll see what the next paragraph there is and dance somewhere.
So there's, there's, uh, snowplows here, and then this is storm, stormwater impact.
You're gonna do a separate number on the stormwater, or you just? I added in the stormwater is a big one. You know, do that separately. Yeah, I would do that.
Especially since there's that basin that's right there that collects.
So, uh, under two C, are we mentioning then additional impact of plowing and grading? Grading. Grading. And raining. Plowing and raining or plowing and grading? Grading, plowing and raining. Gotcha. It's my maritime accent. Springfield, Illinois accent.
Yeah, uh, so just, just on the basis, it seems to me that people use grade roads in an attempt to maintain them. Whereas you, well, I guess plowing is, but plowing causes damage.
Yeah, the grading moves the material and moves it out of the. Right-of-way. That's a problem. Grading hints that. In the theory, it's supposed to improve it, but it still says it couldn't, it couldn't move it. Now, cause let's, let's just add those three things and move on to, to the.
Yep.
How do you want that added? And it should be outside of the citation. Section.
Yes. Additional damage could be caused by.
Plowing, grading, and raining. Rain, raining.
Rain, rain, rain. Here comes the.
All right. Let, let me, uh, write that in here. I've got some of it.
So let's, I'd suggest that we wrap up section two C and let's take a five-minute power break.
Do you want to hear this? Again?
Sure.
Yes, please.
All right, all of it, starting from the beginning. Heavy equipment, including trucks and trailers. Will access the quarry on a regular basis per the quarrying licensing application. Original application, section seventeen, revision September twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen. Based on the planning board's experience with road maintenance, such traffic will necessarily damage the access road over time. Thus requiring maintenance to keep the road up for the applicant as well as for the neighbors. This may include, but is not limited to potholes and movement of the traveled surface outside of the travel right-of-way, all of which will need to be repli- repaired, sorry about that. See meeting minutes at four, ten, uh, October twenty, twenty twenty-one. Meeting minutes at eleven, uh, parentheses, January twelve, twenty twenty-two. Additional damage could be caused by plowing, grading, or heavy rainfall in storm damage.
I like it.
Okay.
Quick. All those in favor taking a five-minute recess? I. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. Run item two D. Additional clarifications to. The second finding on our original decision. And I think we're gonna make mention to weather, storms. And the impact on the. You're, hey, you're, you're doing it.
Okay, ready, Heidi?
I'm here and ready.
Okay, this is a long one.
Okay, read slow.
The planning board also finds. That the, that the intensity and frequency of large storms.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
Appears to be increasing in recent years.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
And that these events.
Yep, yep.
Can exceed the typical design standards.
Okay, hold on. All right.
Such as the use of.
Okay.
The number two comma, the number ten comma. And twenty-five hyphen year comma.
Hold on just a second.
Not just press pause for a second. Would it be easier if we just? Key, if we're gonna be using the language from this, if we just key Heidi to which one of these?
And I, and I could read the whole thing out loud, but.
You can read it, you could read it out loud, and then, um, if then we have any. Further clarification to it, add it then. Would, would you be okay with that, Heidi?
I'm fine with that. It's, um, when I need to read things back. I am not able to do that if I don't have it written in front of me.
Uh, Heidi, do you have Dan's memo from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four?
I don't recall getting it.
I'll, I'll see if Kim can email it to him. Yeah. What's the date on? That's, it's the eighteenth of March. Did you mail that on the eighteen there? Do you remember? Oh, I emailed it to the code enforcement officer on March. She'll have it. She does. See, what I'm thinking, Mr. Chairman, is you could just reference the number once we get it emailed to Heidi. And then Meredith or, or Tracy could, or even yourself, could just say, we're gonna adopt number four. You might read it for the audience's benefit. And then just ask Heidi to add the following clarifications if you want to add something. That's, I think that's a better methodology than I know what I just said.
Good idea, Bill.
Good idea. Thank you.
I, I, although I do think that James actually suggested it earlier.
I did, right? No problem with your parents. Stole your copyright. I never get anything right, so when I got, you know, I'm the youngest of ten, right?
You're always the ten?
I'm the youngest of ten. You never get credit for anything. Probably somebody else's idea.
I only have one sister and Silverstone, my family, too.
I have six, six sisters. All right, so.
So Heidi, in this memo, this is paragraph number ten.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so I'm just gonna read the remainder of the paragraph.
Why don't you read it?
Oh, the whole thing. The planning board also finds that the intensity and frequency of large storms appears to be increasing in recent years. And that these events can exceed the typical design standards for roads such as the use of two, ten, and twenty-five-year, comma, twenty-four-hour-duration storm events. In the stormwater management standards that apply to quarries in the QLO section six point two, point C, point two. When large intense storms occur in the future, the road may not be able to withstand them, even if designed and built in accordance with the town's standards. If that occurs, a washout could damage Mr. Muzetti's property, and he might reasonably refuse or delay consent to co-applicants. To repair the road to its prior condition to avoid further damage to his own property. See correspondence from Matthew D. Manahan, December twenty-eighth, two thousand one, at three.
Two.
Oh, twenty-one, December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. At three.
So Heidi, then Kim just emailed Dan's, um, memos referencing to you.
All right, sounds good. I, I've got a small screen here. I'm not sure I can have all three things open and still do this effectively. But I'll see if I can find it.
Yeah, as long as she knows that she has it, she can go back and letter. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Should I read the rest of them into the record?
Well, I mean.
Or?
I think you. Continuing the momentum you have on this, I mean, then maybe we. Or you parse which ones you think are relative. For additional clarification, so we would be on. Item two E now. You.
Oh, there's two references to stormwater.
Continue with item eleven there.
Okay.
So this is, this would be clarification two E.
So Heidi, this is paragraph eleven that I'm going to read. The amended license application containing access road improvements did not include an updated stormwater model or management plan. Despite the proposed road specification changes and, and increased danger of stormwater ponding on the Muzetti property. And exacerbated road damage due to freezing and thawing. See correspondence from Mark Bergeron, P E, December twenty-third, twenty-third, two thousand one, at three. Mr. Muzetti might reasonably refuse or delay consent to maintenance or reconstruction necessary to correct such problems and damage. Preventing co-applicants from maintaining the road as required. See meeting minutes at three to five, um, parentheses, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Read us this.
What?
Oh, three, five, sorry.
Three. Three to, to five.
Yes. You know, I, I. I think that, um, you know, maybe the next relative section of this would be just the consent of maintenance. I think we're. We've indicated that, you know, the. You know, talking about storms and traffic and all that, I think we need to talk about, you know, just the. Again, relative to the original wording of the easement presented at that time. You know, that, that the consent for maintenance cannot be unreasonably withheld. But there's no insurance of its continued rights and maintenance than that, um. And it could deny maintenance in some circumstances that they, you know. And if he did, he wouldn't did, the co-app, wouldn't be able to meet the obligation to maintain the road. And then I think we just need to. Dan's essentially doing this here, then summarize our position on it, unless you guys feel like we need another.
I think we could also emphasize the fact that it's written consent. Be one thing if they, you know, I, I guess I'd. The, uh. Mike Muzetti is asking a lot. He's, he's not saying you can't, you can just. Sure, you can go out and fill out a, a pothole or something like that. He's saying you have to have written consent for me to go out. But then that seems to me a indication, not just that he's saying, I, I want. I want you to get consent before I make repairs, but you need to have written. I want you to give consent before I make repairs, but you need to have written consent.
Yeah, well, that, that was, you know, let's talk about the timeliness of review and relative to repair.
You know, like. When it's written consent, that that, that that was part of the issue of it's not, not just simply that he needed, he said, you need to give consent, so you don't, can't just go out there and pave over the place, you know, and.
For the terms of the easement on book and page number, whatever, but and that the remittance of written consent by Mr. Muzetti could potentially affect the timeliness of review and repair of potential issues with the maintenance of the road.
And I guess that's just thinking that applicants trying to say, what's it means? He said that he, you know, he agrees with consent, it was not really a restraint. And the fact that he said you have to have written, written consent from me indicates to me that it's not, he's not taking this lightly. It's not a just, yeah, 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 I just don't want you just going out there and doing whatever thing you want. You just need to come and ask me first. He's actually saying, no, you need to have it written.
Process.
And that, that's not an easygoing attitude.
What are we on? Two F? Heidi?
Uh, you are on, I mean, I, you're on two E about written consent and things. I really haven't heard anything that sounded like an official motion wording, so I've written a few notes, but.
Are you finished with your actual findings and you're now into the reasoning? You know, these, these other things that you've been, Tracy's been reading seem to be more findings of fact.
Yeah.
Now you're talking about reasoning.
Which should be an amendment to the conclusion.
Well, I just wonder if there's any other findings of fact that you want to get in the record before you get to the reasoning.
About the timeliness of consent?
No, about the, the road, the easement, the stormwater, the damage, those were all findings of fact. Then now you're gonna talk about the, the nature of the easement and then the reasoning like you just did. But are there any other findings of fact you want to do?
Finding of facts that we were going through, the A, B, and C were, were in reference to two. So the, the, the second finds.
Yeah, so we have two additional clarifications to A, B, C, and D. And then we would have then, if I understand this right, then James, go to our add additional clarification to our conclusion. Number one.
So you, the, the, the method is to remind you is we find as a matter of fact, we find as a matter of fact, we find as a matter of fact, from those facts, we conclude that.
And that's where we talk about, and that's where we talk about the reasoning.
Right, so you're finished with fact finding? I had a whole bunch of other ones that I thought we discussed at the time, which went, was, went like this, but Meredith objected earlier. There was talk about. There could be some. Mr. Muzetti took a long time to get the thing in in the first place. But that was a, it took a while to get the easement. He asked for it and we found that it took a while. Um, that the easement itself asked for written approval.
Right.
It's the easement. The, the period for the timing was, I don't know, was a year, year and a half.
That's a long time to get. I sent that reasoning though.
About the time. Finding, but it's up to you.
The timeliness of review and repair.
You mentioned it in your region. I don't care. I kind of like it as a fact, but.
I kind of like it as a finding of fact, too.
You may as well object again. You objected before.
You know, it's, I, I agree with what you're saying. That was the, the, um, I, I, I was objecting to not objecting, but just getting concerned with a different approach. It wasn't this that I was objecting to. But anyway, it's the organization of this document that is, it's the where are, is this a two F or hold on, what, what have the two A, B, and A, B, and C have been backups of the statement of?
Finding number two.
Finding number two.
And so we, we could have the next substant, additional clarification of finding number two, talk about the timeliness of review relative to the written consent.
Right.
So Heidi, can you read two E back to us? If you have.
A little loose, but yes, hold on a second. Let me find that. You have got written consent is required per the terms of the easement. And written consent. Uh, indicating the landowner is not taking it lightly. The that's really the biggest thing. And then attorney Collier had, um, it took a while to even get the easement. Um, again, with easement asks for written approval, uh, the period of timing was lengthy. Those are really all you guys have kind of said. There's nothing firm.
I think we could totally condense that into the, the relative timely, the relative complication of written consent. That based upon the language of the easement, you know, book page or whatever, you know, requiring written consent by the fee landowner, Mr. Muzetti. Potential damage repaired could be delayed. And not because the QLO refers to the timeliness of the of the repair. Or that, you know, that the timeless, timeliness of the repair is prescribed by the QLO, you know, could be potentially delayed.
And isn't it indeed likely that it would be?
I, I don't know. Maybe he's right on top of this email that day and.
Maybe.
You know?
Maybe he's not in Tahiti. Maybe he decides it's reasonable. Maybe you have to get whipped it out and ready. Oh, yeah, facts is right back.
So I think that's why the qualifier potential should be included.
Okay, do you want that read back?
Sure.
So, uh, complication of a written consent based on the language of the easement recorded in book and page, I'll get that. Requiring written consent required by fee landowner, um, potent, potential damage repair could be delayed. Again, but it's, you guys are saying the same things over. Timeliness of repairs described by the, the quarry licensing ordinance could be delayed. That we can combine those two. I'm just.
Yes. That could be.
Should we include or deny? I mean, also, the ultimately, Muzetti does.
Well, I think that's the reasoning we're gonna say when we get down to the conclusion is that, and look, he can deny this too, you know?
Yeah, they say reasonable, but we don't know the scenario where it would be reasonable for him to deny them. They don't have, ultimately, they don't have control, so.
Yeah.
And then what do you do?
Right.
I think that's under conclusion. Supporting reasoning for a further clarification of our conclusion, our original conclusion.
But on what Heidi's writing right now, you don't think it's worth putting at the end, delayed or even denied? Even put the word even denied?
Yeah, you could say that, you know, is written, written approval or denial of.
Repairs.
Repairs.
I'm adding that in then, yes?
Yes, please.
Anything else, James?
Well, I went down a dark road. Meredith didn't want to go down earlier.
Please go down.
Uh, I'll repeat it and then you can say, we don't want to discuss that. Um, I remembered and I had quite a strong memory of discussions about the, the nature of the whole milieu here. We have a lot of neighbors in a quiet residential neighborhood who were very concerned, who have shown up for ten years, who, um, I think at one point they tried to get something on the warrant or a referendum or something at one point. I had to rewrite it for them. So the point was that the history of this shows a very active neighborhood. And, and, and a, an industrial use in the middle of a very active neighborhood. And I think the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, my memory is that the board thought that there would be likely that there would be the neighbors would actively watch the situation and complain if they thought anything was wrong. It's not like this is gonna happen out somewheres in the woods, so nobody's gonna notice it. If anything happens to that road, somebody's gonna notice it. They're gonna call Cape right away. And the reason I go through all that is that that will mean that this, it's added pressure to, for, that this situation is more likely to happen, that there's gonna be calls for repair. And I think the proof to this, and the citation to the record is, there were, there were a couple of times that the, the, um, uh, lessee had gone out to remove some stone. Right away, there was, they were, they were all over that calling Kim and demanding the stop work order. So I just think that, that, I don't know if this means anything to you guys or not, but there was, there was this situation, there's an added pressure because it's under a microscope. And for me, as, as, as a town attorney, that creates this situation with the code enforcement officer making her job very difficult because she's got a bunch of, and rightfully so, it's in their neighborhood. A bunch of hawks watching it with a hawk-like eye going, look, go make out what's happening. And then she's gotta get something done and then she has to get approval from Muzetti. It's, it's a pressure-packed situation, which is likely to cause a problem.
But isn't that kind of painting the picture of totality here with?
Maybe it is.
Yeah, you, you were saying we're finding facts. And I guess my concern is what you're talking about is kind of a judgment. Uh, you know, the people will change, the, you know, making character judgments on people whether they, you know, who's having arguments with each other, that isn't a consistent scenario and it's not made it as a fact, but it's not, uh, it's a sympathizing with why we were making this. And I don't know that the courts should care are swayed by sympathy to, I think they're looking.
No, I, I think there, there were a bunch of facts there. The neighbors are very interested in that. They've shown that. It's a residential neighbor, industrial use in a largely residential neighborhood. That's a fact. We can all agree to that. It's a first-time thing. This is the only one in town. It's different from every other use in town. It's only quarry. The neighbors will complain because they've had a history of complaining. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but they have. They've actively watched it. And that, all of those things, the conclusion from those things is that there will be complaints as soon as there's a problem. And that this scenario will happen. It's much more back to your con, whether it'll happen or not. Because of those factors, it's more likely that there will be an issue.
Okay, I think we need to add some.
If you don't want to go there, you don't want to go there.
I think.
I'm just trying to figure out how it fits in because we're, I don't, I don't hear things that you can, that that's justification to make rules.
I, I think that would fit in again to any additional clarification of reasoning we have with our final conclusion, our original final.
We're going down findings, which are facts.
That doesn't sound that factual to me in terms of the spec, the specificity we're giving to our original finding number two relative to the right title and interest issue.
But the, the reason I mentioned it is on the facts is if, if you don't want to go to that conclusion, that it's more likely than not that this will become.
Like we're doing this right now, James.
I know. But in deciding whether you want to add those facts or not, if you don't want to go to that conclusion, you don't have to add the facts. If you want to go to the conclusion, you want to add the facts and add it now so you can have it later.
Well, I think we need to get a kind of a draft.
Don't let me interrupt.
Conclusion clarification out there. And, you know, relative to some of the additional points Dan talks about beyond item twelve, I think else could kind of be molded into maybe an additional clarification or two to our original conclusion number one.
Uh, the fall is a scenario where, where, uh, consent might be with, um, and I guess I also, uh, from my own experiences, I think of the possibility of there being more than one option for the repair of the road and that there's a lack of agreement as to which is the best um, that might have, that Muzetti would feel that if the maintenance were addressed one way, would have an impact on his land where it might be more economic and the applicant's convinced that it wouldn't have a negative impact, things, things like that, that there isn't necessarily but you have to come to an agreement as to how maintenance is done to acquire Muzetti's consent. Um, and that that could be a reasonable point for Muzetti to withhold consent because it's just that, that simply the two aren't in agreement about the approach of how to solve a problem. And so frequently happens in the world.
So again, I think we could condense essentially the reasoning of sections twelve through fifteen into a additional point or two added to our conclusion number one and and just to read our conclusion number one again, you know, what, that was where we arrived at then. It says, after review of the quarry plans, supporting evidence submitted by the co-applicants and having made the findings described by the planning board concluded that the quarrying plan is inadequate due to co-applicants cannot ensure the main. Described above the planning board concluded that the coring plan is inadequate due to co-applicants cannot ensure the maintenance of the access road. Specifically, a board member moved at the board's meeting on April third, twenty twenty four. Coring license ordinance section six point two A two requires. Owner and operator ensuring the maintenance of all infrastructure structures and their sites, the easement provided by the applicant. Specifies that changes in the construction maintenance must be approved by the fee landowner. As the applicant does not have the unequivocal right to repair and maintain the road, given the limitations to the easement, the applicant. Cannot fulfill its duty to ensure the maintenance as required under six A two. And then. You know, and we could. Say um. You know, because consent for maintenance can't be, cannot be unreasonably withheld by Muzetti, there's no insurance of continued rights. Maintenance, they can, Mr. Muzetti could approve or deny a request for maintenance. And that's um. That the board divided the co-applicants stop need to return. At that time, granting the unequivocal right to maintain the right of way. And at that time, you know, and the the co-advocates were unable to obtain an easement granting such rights.
Were you hoping Heidi was writing all that down? No, you were reading that.
I'm, I did not catch all that, so if it is part of your.
No, he was reading, reading from this, but.
Okay, I couldn't tell, thanks.
Trying to inspire some thought.
So, so from reading. One.
Conclusion one.
Alright, so we're we're out of findings and we're in the conclusions.
I I I feel like we are. Yeah, so we're, so we have two conclusions, right? You know, one was relative to the purpose statement of the Q L L, which the court said, no. And the relative to the relative conclusion. We're adding further clarification to this conclusion one, and that's what I just read.
Yeah, correct.
And that was. From our February, what was uh? No, it's April third, twenty twenty four.
I I kinda liked your conclusion except for the last.
No, sorry, almost.
So you didn't, James, you don't like the last sentence of this?
Yeah, in your conclusion where it says, uh as it is a practical table peon landowners approval to repair the deed in the road down to the arm on zone. The applicants shown uh sufficient evidence for our technical interests is part. That's the part, I wonder, I'm not sure whether you should just flesh that out a bit, the reasoning connecting your facts that you did to that statement. Or you wanna leave it as it is? Well, key word to me is impactful. And the the theory, the concept is. They have to show us they have the right to do that which they're in reality very likely going to have to do, which is. Use the road and fix it. And they're gonna show us they have right title and interest to do that. And really, they don't. They have, maybe we can, maybe we can't, depending on what Mr. Muzetti says.
I think that was, that goes back to the wording that. The specific time the um the requirement to be able to assure. That it's upon. The applicant to assure that they can provide maintenance.
Right, it's their burden.
And by requiring written consent, they cannot assure, they don't have the authority to assure anything.
Yeah, I really like that, Mr. Chairman, if you like that, I like that, I really like that, that word of. They're supposed to assure that they do and then they can't. Assure us of that. That's what the part, the facts show us.
Good word, Meredith.
A good word.
I just read it.
Where did you read it from?
Somewhere in one of these papers. It was what we required. This this section of the core ordinance required. That they be able to assure. The applicant has the duty to ensure the maintenance of all the infrastructure. Just three or four, yes, it um the. The first paragraph back there under the board members. Also moved at the board meeting of January twelfth.
That was a smart person, they came up with that, probably you.
No, probably not. I'd like to say English isn't my first language, but it is.
You said, I kinda like that. Cause it goes right along with the the remand. You know?
I mean.
It's under section six point two A two of the.
You know, I I'm just. I'm feeling like the wording of our conclusions pretty good. You know, and then, and if there is any further clarification, it doesn't need much.
Well, I think we were just saying. I'm getting lost, sorry, um. That was just the last. James was even saying it's just the last sentence. Um rather than. The applicant has not shown sufficient evidence of. Um right. Title rate and interest. Whether we add to that. Um they cannot assure. Quote it straight from the ordinance. Uh maintenance, therefore they cannot assure or.
I mean, can we say because of the aforementioned? Findings, so. Does that help?
Yeah. I kinda like the idea that you do what you had before. Uh based on section article. Six, section six one two, they're required to do this, to ensure that they can do that. And based on our findings, it's apparent that they they cannot, that we we do not accept that they can do that.
I think it's just the the emphasis of the word assure.
Ensure or assure?
Ensure.
Ensure, yeah. I like it.
But I hope they just add, uh they cannot. To that conclusion, they cannot ensure the maintenance. Found it back in the conclusion that we have.
You wanna coordinate that with Heidi?
Where are you, Heidi?
What, first off, what was the section that you guys were referencing? I'm not sure.
We're in the the conclusions that we had.
No, but the quarry licensing uh section. That talks about ensuring. I thought that it was in there, no?
It's six, six point two.
Eighty-two, I think.
C uh two C, hang on a minute. Six point two A two. Oh, hold on. Six point two, yeah, A two, okay.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Uh, okay, so what do I have? I have got a lot of different things written in here, we have to make it into a cohesive sentence. But um. Uh, it goes back to wording, the specific. It's the applicant's burden. Um with uh. Okay, I'm just gonna read what I've written here, specific timing to be able to ensure. The applicant's burden with the requirement of written consent, they can't ensure anything. Um, the section six two A two of the quarry licensing ordinance requires them to be able to ensure the maintenance. Of all infrastructure um that is not shown uh. They cannot ensure maintenance because of the aforementioned findings is what. It it's all just garbled together, just. Pieces, we have to make it one. Sorry about that.
I think all that we were talking about doing was uh from our. Our previous conclusion. Uh leaving our previous conclusion as it stands. And the previous uh conclusion ends with that six point two A two. And just put underneath that. Uh you put underneath our previous conclusion. One. We do not find that the applicant can ensure the maintenance of the infrastructure.
Alright, so the previous conclusion will be left as it is. Um and then end with, we do not, we do not find the applicant can ensure the maintenance of the infrastructure.
Is that the right wording flow pattern?
Further requirements of section six point two A two.
Well, that our conclusion says. Good, uh right before this. The section six point two ordinance, but the applicant did not fulfill the duty because of the limitations of the. So. We we pretty much said it already.
Yeah, I think you just have to change the word limitation of the aforementioned, make a small A. There you go, and you're done, as well said the first time.
Yeah.
But should read fulfill that duty because of the limitation of the aforementioned easement.
Limitations.
Yeah. The limitations. Of the aforementioned easement.
Got that, Heidi?
No, is that um where exactly do you want that put? We have, we do not find the applicant can ensure the maintenance of the infrastructure.
No, I think we just go. The applicant has a duty to ensure the maintenance of all infrastructures, structures and their sites per section. Six point eight two of the coring license ordinance.
So Heidi's not following along.
Yeah, that's absolutely too fast, I'm not even, there's not even a point.
They're they're actually just suggesting that we leave our conclusion as it is.
I just wanna correct the grammar a little.
Okay, so it's it's we're looking at the previous conclusion and making tweaks to the grammar.
Yeah, Heidi, this is our um, you know, dated decision of February ninth, twenty twenty two. And we're talking about the. Second paragraph, second sentence. Of our first conclusion. On page two of four.
Does Heidi have this document or did she forget?
We emailed this.
We can send our Dan please.
Oh, right.
I'm sure I have it, but I don't have it open right now, I've got this open, I've got you guys open, there's. No more room for opening things.
Why don't we just read slowly this paragraph with the corrections and Heidi can just break down this one paragraph?
There you go.
Okay.
Stop with the word limitation.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Uh, so we're gonna read through the paragraph.
Yes, and then Attorney Collier said something, I missed that.
Uh he was, he was telling me to when to stop.
Okay, okay. Uh, read slowly, please.
The applicant has a duty. To ensure the maintenance of. All infrastructures. Structures. And their sites per section. Six point two A two. Of the quarry licensing licensing ordinance. Comma. But the applicant cannot fulfill the duty.
That duty.
Fulfill that duty. Because of the limitation.
Or limitations.
Limitations.
Of.
Of. The. Aforementioned. Easement.
Alright, I've got that.
I'd I'd love to be able to add something else, let me propose it without Heidi writing it. We're gonna add, in other words. In other words, uh the record evidence evidence does not demonstrate that the easement uh allows. Use of the property in a manner consistent with that use for which the permit is sought. It's very close to what comes out of Tommasino and it's what he's looking for in the remand. Hold on, it's just a clarification.
Say it again.
Yeah, that one.
In other words, so you do what we just did, and then in other words. The easement. Does not allow for use of the property in a manner consistent with that use for which the permit is sought.
There you go. And ties it into the Thomas.
So we just told Heidi not to write that down.
Yeah, do you wanna put it in?
Sounds good.
Sounds good as a final. Sentence to our conclusion.
Can you say it again slowly?
In other words, comma.
Yep.
The easement.
Yep.
Does not.
Yep. I got some of it.
Allow for.
Yep.
Quote. Quotation mark.
Ah, okay.
You with me?
Yeah.
Use of the property.
Okay, hold on. Yep.
In a manner.
Yep.
Consistent.
Yep.
With that use.
Yep.
For which.
Yep.
The permit is sought.
Okay.
Period.
Yeah.
End quote.
Okay.
Tommasino.
Yep.
T O N A S I N O, Tommasino. That should be italicized, comma.
Okay.
Twenty twenty.
Yep.
Cap, capital M, capital E.
Yep.
Ninety-six.
Yep.
Comma.
Yep.
Par paragraph twelve.
Okay.
Period.
Alright, the whole thing in uh uh italics, you said?
No, just the word Tommasino.
Okay. Alright, got it.
Can you read back to us, please?
Yep. Yep. In other words, the easement does not allow for, quote, use of the property in a manner consistent with that use for which the permit is sought, period, end quote, Tommasino, twenty twenty, ME ninety six, paragraph twelve.
I love it, thank you. So that really ties it together.
And and just the question that goes at the end of the conclusion, yes?
The first conclusion, yeah.
And is that in place of what, uh, Meredith had done or in addition to?
In addition to.
Okay, great.
The second conclusion that we came to seems James more in line with what you were talking about. Based on the testimony, several, several neighbors and numerous occasions. Uh, who don't believe that they could adhere to the application, I, your, your discussion of the. The. That it is likely to happen and and will happen, that, you know, that that. I was wondering, our conclusion there was getting more, what you were talking about there.
Yeah. Maybe it was. So I think we're done, aren't we?
Yeah, so we've got our additional clarifications for. Original findings, decision and our. Slight rewording. One sentence clarif- additional clarification of the original conclusion.
And then you make a motion to deny based on your new. On its fact, it was disallowed and call for motion to adjourn.
Vote on those findings. Yeah, we should.
It should vote of the findings, I was gonna say that.
I make a motion to vote an affirmative for the findings we've just found. Do you have to go through each one?
So, no, so, um. Maybe we're a little more specific about the additional, the additional. Findings, clarifications added to the original decision dated. You know, and, you know, let's be really specific here, the original. Whatever day.
Original, um.
February ninth, right?
Yeah.
Twenty two.
Statements of findings and conclusions.
Um. Yeah, I think we should be a little more specific, the, um, additional clarifications to findings, to the original. Findings number two. Right? That's why we, we just didn't. Two, eighty three.
True, yeah.
F, E. And our. Original. Conclusion number one. And.
In its, in its entirety?
The additional clarification to our conclusion number one. Clarification is the operative word there.
I'm wondering, as I'm reading back on our findings, why we said they, because they might be affected by the quarry. Use.
Where are you reading from?
Uh, our original findings, the first one. The neighbor represented, rather, so. I'm not even trying to read that.
So we're. We're looking for a motion to.
Yeah, I know, I just wanna make sure that we recap that, that, that. We go through things so slowly, and I wonder if that's what happened the first time around, that we. Look at this point and this point and this point, and then we didn't look at the, what is the overall impression that we've left with all of our wording? Did we give them? Because I, I think we must have somehow looked at each individual point and and not left the court with the overall. Impression that we somehow missed.
I think that.
The bigger point by the U T law.
I think the totality of our decision still stands as. Exemplified by, we didn't amend or remove or, um, modify those original. Larger scale issues we thought were relative to our decision.
The courts didn't, didn't seem to understand why we made the, and we, we flushed them out.
You know, I, I think that the.
I guess I just don't understand why the court didn't get it.
I think the court, the thing I was surprised about is that the, um. The court definitely acknowledged specifically, you know, the. The human process of. And the impact of all of this, you know, and I was, I was really surprised to read that, so I, I think the court did get it. But for them to, to substantiate their decision. You know, again, we just had to quantify it more, so the, I think the, the totality and the. The human concern here about this was recognized, we just needed to strengthen it. And I think we did strengthen it tonight.
And I could explain why they did that, as to answer your question, because there's a. Ten to fifteen year history of the law court overturning stuff, it's not laid out well enough. So what the court's afraid of is, if I accept this and make a decision on it. Even if they agree with you. The locker would just kick it back and ask the court to remand it back, because it wasn't adequate. It wasn't well burst out of them. The law court has just been on this mission. For ten or fifteen years to get you to lay out all your findings. In other words.
And do you think as an overall thing that we have succeeded this evening and in?
I think it's fabulous, of course, I thought it was good in the first place.
Well, that's what concerned me is I, I just wanna make sure that we, we've done everything, like that we, we got so focused on the points and I just don't have a.
I feel.
The big picture, have we completed? Give them the bigger pictures so they understand.
I think the court. Uh, well. From reading the court's remand, I know that the court acknowledged our. Thorough review of the totality of this project over the last eight years. And it's just. We're just like fine tuning a few keys on the piano right now, and to solidify that, and. I'm. Proud of where we arrived tonight.
I think it's fair to say that the court praised your leadership in the board's thorough review.
Mm hmm.
I've never seen that, it's really quite something, where they said, board's done a good job. During the entire process, you can add yourself in back for that.
Yeah, you guys should be really proud of that.
I've never seen that. So you voted on the thing to accept those things and they add them to the rest of the.
And we, we haven't voted.
Well, they made a motion.
So, so just tweak your motion, Heidi, and let's. Get there.
I, I don't have a motion, I don't think.
Sorry, I meant tracing. To read your motion specifically to. The date of the final decision and the specific clarification to the specific original finding and conclusion.
Okay, so, and start off with, um. Our, the, uh, date of decision was Wednesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty two. Um, this was a document called Statement of Findings and Conclusions. And then, how am I?
And you moved to. To accept the, or, or you proposed. You moved to propose the additional clarifications to findings number two of the original February. Additional clarifications of findings number two.
Yeah.
Of the February ninth, twenty twenty two, original decision. And additional clarification to. The original conclusion number one of the same decision.
Yeah.
Do you wanna hear that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the date of the decision was February ninth, twenty twenty two. Um, called the Statement of Findings and Conclusions. Uh, Ms. Loftus Keller moved to propose. Uh, the additional clarifications to findings number two of the February nine, twenty twenty two, original decision and additional clarification to original conclusion number one of the same decision.
Yeah, so moved.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, James.
I think you vote to deny. Based on your.
Why do we vote to deny if we already have?
Deny what?
Yeah, what are, what are we denying? There's already a denial on there. We're just, the remand wanted us to clarify. It relative to the. Original. Findings and conclusion. I, I don't think we vote to deny it again.
All right, I can live with that. Slight, I'm tired.
So I just got a bedtime alert, so.
Or we're just substantiating our rationale for the decision we already had made, so. We already had voted that.
I think we just did what the court asked us to do. So I think the next thing is a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have a hand there.
You know, I'm making, I'm reading the, uh, decision again, it says to remand to the planning board much to term whether the plan is five record evidence. You did all that.
I did all that.
The up to the planning board to determine the nature of any additional proceedings.
Both the other lawyers in the room seem to wanna say things, so.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we did our job, so.
Mr. Lyons.
Well, if I may, I'd like to just note a few objections for the record, preserve for our appeal.
Before I do that.
I think that, from my perspective, I think that you need to, um, indicate that based on your additional findings, the, um, you affirm your.
That's what I was trying to, right, because I think you still have to tie it into whether the applicant met its burden group. And I think you just say, based on our additional supplemental findings, we affirm our prior decision. Prior.
And you will let Mr. Ray back?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, I, thanks for the opportunity, but I agree, I, I think Dan is right.
Yeah, I was, I'm, I'm late, it's late, I'm tired, I'm foggy, but I, I knew you had to do something like that.
So, based on our. Affirmation of our. Previous findings, we.
Affirm your.
Affirm our previous decision. I second findings, fact. Conclusions of law.
It's essentially, it's based upon our, um. Additional clarifications of our, um. Original decision. You know, that we're, um. Help us, what? Say it again, Dan.
Based upon our supplemental findings or supplemental clarifications. Uh, we affirm our, um, previous denial of the application.
I like it.
Did Heidi get that? Heidi, were you able to catch that?
Yes, sorry, oh, I've been typing and I wasn't muted, sorry about that. Based on the supplemental clarifications of the original decision, uh, the board affirms their previous denial of the application. Or the board moves to affirm.
Yes, so moved. I, I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Return.
Um, I'd like to note four objections for the record, Heidi, I will try to speak slowly. And loud enough for you to hear me. Um, objection one. The applicant subjects the planning board not permitting arguments. On or considering in any way the issues raised. In their March twenty seven, in April two, twenty twenty four. Memorandums submitted to the planning board. Including attachments. Objection two.
Uh, I'm, before you go to, to, can you just one more time? I got a lot of that, but not all of it. And of course, I can also, uh, I can also refer to the recording if you'd prefer.
That's fine with me, Heidi, whatever you prefer.
Can't, can't you just read it and then email it to Kim and Kim will leave you?
Whatever the board prefers.
What do you think of that, though?
I think that works.
So Heidi, I think what we'll do is. Is Patrick will read it, but he will just email these to Kim, who will send them to you.
All right, that works for me, thank you.
Okay, objection two, the applicant subject the planning board not taking into consideration the March twenty six. Twenty twenty four easement amendment recorded in the Hancock County Registry of Deeds. Objection number three, the applicant subject the planning board not taking into consideration the March eight, twenty twenty two amendment to section six B, point eleven, point two of the Mount Desert Land Use Sonin Ordinance. And objection four, the applicant's object the planning board's decision to deliberately involve only three members of the planning board in tonight's hearing. Thank you.
Got it. Yeah, Mr. Ray, whatever, Ray back.
No, thank you, nothing further.
No burning desire to add anything?
No, thank you.
Lawyer doesn't like talking. All right, now a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. I second that.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Did you record it?
Yes. Kim is doing it.
I'm sorry about the last one, I knew I was getting it something, I'm learning. Then you had to deny or affirm or second.
So you just stated in the negative, or you stated in the positive, or?
Time to go home.
I'm reminder thirty minutes.
Yeah.
For you to go to bed?
Immediately. Your kids, your kids send you that? Yeah, so I'm gonna bed.
You can set it up on your.
Oh, you set it up for you, I'm not that technologically sophisticated, I don't have a watch.